Good evening and welcome to the June 10, 2020 work session of the Pennfield Town Board. I'll officially call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask those of us that are in the auditorium, and tonight I am joined by Councilman Andy Moore, Sue Scheit, who's our deputy town clerk, and we have two members of our team. We have Mark Valentine, our town engineer and planner, and Jim Costello, Development Services, that are joining. And I'll ask those of us in the auditorium to lead everyone in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll and ask that everyone please identify themselves on the line. We do have Councilwoman Debbie Draw, Councilwoman Linda Cole, and Councilman Bob Ockenton. So I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Draw.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
LaFountain.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ockenton.
Here.
All right, or all here.
All right, before we move into our agenda, I want to read this notice. Due to COVID-19 virus and the closing of town operations consistent with governor's executive orders, the June 10, 2020 Town Board Work Session meeting is being held remotely via Zoom. This meeting is also being video recorded and broadcast live via the town's website at www.pennfield.org, on the town's governmental access cable channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You may search Pennfield TV in your device's app store. It is a free app. This meeting will be later transcribed. Any questions regarding video coverage, please contact pennfieldtv@3408661. So with that, we'll move into our agenda, and we have our minutes before us of the May 13th, 2020 minutes, and would ask a motion of approval for those minutes.
So moved, Mr. Supervisor?
Second. Been moved by Councilwoman Debbie Draw, seconded by Councilman Bob Ockenton. I'll ask the board, are there any questions regarding the minutes or changes, modifications that they have identified? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval for those minutes, May 13th, 2020.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenton.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
All right, thank you very much. The next order of business are monthly reports. We have all but two monthly reports in, which are due by the end of this week, and I trust those two will be with us. So thank you to all the department heads for getting those in on time or ahead of time. So thank you for that. Keeps the board updated to all the different things that your respective departments are working on. So thank you for that. This evening, we do not have any guests that will be joining us. We do not have any public hearings. So we will move right into action items, and our first action item is a sidewalk waiver request at Stafford Park, and Mr. Valentine will tee this up for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'll share my screen here so that it can be up for the audience once it pops up shortly. So this is an overall plat map of that property. So this is an application currently pending before the planning board. Here is Jackson Road, or Old Jackson Road, if you want to call it that. Was the former Christmas tree farm off of Jackson Road. Has been purchased or is in contract for a new development. So they're showing a 20-lot home development off of that property. So it's a cul-de-sac street. The developer does show sidewalks on their plan to show that they could comply, and then sidewalks along the Jackson Road frontage. They have asked and submitted a request to have a waiver for this. So I've run through our adopted policy for that. So we look at, you know, we've kind of got a breakup of the town, whether it's east of kind of East Pennfield area and West Pennfield area. So part of that, you know, we put in the number of lots, the number of lineal foot of sidewalks internally. So our full compliance is sidewalk along the road frontage as well as both sides of the road internally. So we plug that in. It's based on the current county bid price, which is $39.50 a lineal foot. So that's for a five-foot-wide sidewalk. One foot of sidewalk costs us $39.50. So we use that as our base price. We look at, you know, what the full compliance is. So this is a little spreadsheet here. So full compliance, the full cost is $105,000. The board's waiver policy has been 50% of that cost. We also look at, and not to overburden any one given property or parcel, that if it's a residential property, it's no more than $5,000 per home lot, and commercial, no more than $10,000. So that's kind of that check C in the middle. And then, you know, looking at what the maximum amount is, the maximum amount could be $100,000. So then 50% of that construction cost works out to $52,614. So if the board was supportive of that waiver, then that money would be allocated to our overall town sidewalk fund. If the town board so did want to designate, they could, you know, allocate that to future sidewalks along Jackson Road itself. So the developer is, you know, supportive of the waiver. Typically, we have it paid on a billing permit. So each billing permit comes in, so they break that down, so it would be roughly $2,500 per billing permit when they pay that. You know, they, it's an incremental cost, each permit, we pass that along to the billing department, and then he pays that, or developer pays that as each new application comes in.
Okay.
So I can go back to the plan, or I can stick with the cost breakdown. I don't know which is better. I can go back to the plan for the board to take a look at that. Currently, there are no sidewalks in this section of Jackson Road that's out there. The planning board is currently going through the application with a public hearing. There's been some, you know, questions, thoughts, comments about getting sidewalks on Jackson Road from the nearby residents. That's come up about walkability of that street and, you know, some of the access along there. So that's some of the comments that the planning board's been hearing through their discussions with the public.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Valentine. And before I open it up to the board, and the board, thank you, the board did receive this material that was submitted, not only the worksheet, but the map as well. And I'll ask, Mr. Valentine, where is this project currently before the planning board?
Yeah, the planning board had a sketch plan earlier in the year. They had a preliminary final hearing, I think it was in early in May. They've gone through two work sessions. So I believe at the last meeting, the planning board has indicated to staff to begin preparing approval resolution for it. So they were finalizing some details, not obviously, you know, sure whether the board is ready or not, but just asking us to kind of get some materials together for it. The planning board, it'll be back before the board tomorrow night, so the planning board, you know, may or may not be ready to take action if they are.
All right, thank you. So the next opportunity for discussion with the planning board is tomorrow evening.
Correct.
All right, very good. I'll ask the board, based on the materials that you received and the comments from Mr. Valentine, do you have any questions for Mark regarding this request?
Mr. Supervisor, I don't have any questions for Mark, but just, I guess, a comment, my personal thought on it. An opportunity to travel that stretch of Jackson Road in recent weeks, and as the weather's gotten nice, there has been a lot of pedestrian, you know, use of that stretch, bicyclists, walkers. And I, for one, think that stretch should be looked at for sidewalks sooner rather than later. And I think putting the funding into the sidewalks for that stretch of road would be a better plan than the development itself. So if approved by the planning board and this moves forward, I would be in favor of reallocating funds into the sidewalk fund itself.
Thank you, Bob. Other questions, comments regarding this request?
Mr. Supervisor, real quick, I agree 100% with Councilman Ockenton's comments. This area, certainly, you have sidewalks along a portion of Jackson Extension. You've got sidewalks along, going east and west along Whalen Road. And then this portion of Jackson Road, it's a pretty narrow road, and certainly, you know, sidewalks would be warranted going into this particular location. So I just want to make sure that my comments are on the record as to moving the funding for sidewalks with this waiver for Jackson Road, for future sidewalks along Jackson Road. Certainly, I think the $52,000 or so, $52,000 or so is not going to complete sidewalks all the way from Whalen Road on up past Pennfield Presbyterian Church, and then up to the connection of Jackson Extension and Jackson Road. But I think it's a good start, and there's been other examples throughout the town for long roads such as Panorama Trail, that we did it in sections with funding being available to complete those over a period of time. And so I think this may be one of those examples, but I think it's important that we start looking at Jackson Road for sidewalks, and certainly putting sidewalks into this new residential development, I believe, is not warranted just because of the traffic volumes and the amount of households that are there. I just don't think warrants the use of sidewalks similar to like Thorn Tree Circle, which does not have sidewalks either, which is right down the road from where this is going. So I echo Councilman Ockenton's comments, and certainly would support using the $52,000 in sidewalk funds for Jackson Road sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask, Mr. Valentine, is the proposal to have both sides interior not have sidewalks, or one side have sidewalks and then money dedicated to Jackson Road?
The developer's asking to have no internal sidewalks.
Okay.
So he, obviously, that would back out from the $52,000, so it would take it down to about $20,000. He would do sidewalks inside internally, and then based on our calculation, would only be $20,000 into the sidewalk fund. His letter, he requested a full waiver not to install any sidewalks, but just, you know, pay it into the fund, and then, you know, he would grant sidewalk easements along his property on Jackson Road, and then, you know, allocate or accommodate for them in the future, you know, when the town comes to install them.
Thank you for that explanation. I ask because this board has had requests in the past where, instead of having sidewalks on both sides, to have sidewalks on one side, and then to take the difference from the other side and apply that maybe to the town fund. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear on the record for the board, that as Councilman Moore pointed out, no sidewalks, and Andy reinforced that, or excuse me, Mark reinforced that, no sidewalks internally for this subdivision being proposed, and taking all of that money and putting that out on Long Jackson Road. So thank you for that clarification both ways. I'll ask the rest of the board, any further discussion or comments regarding that? All right, so I think the board, I'm seeing that there's agreement to use that money and apply it, provided the planning board grants final approval of this project, but that to take that money, apply it, I think Mr. Moore indicated that certainly not enough, I think rough calculations indicate that it'll take approximately $250,000 to go from Whalen Road up to Jackson Extension, Jackson Road. So this would cover about a fifth of those costs. And what the town board would look to do is that through our normal budgeting process or over several years potentially, to put those sidewalks in. So I would entertain a motion to move forward with the sidewalk waiver.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Ockenton, moved by Councilman Ockenton, and seconded by Councilman Moore. I'll ask, any further discussion by the board? I'll ask town staff, any additional input on this item that you believe should be added to the record that wasn't part of the submission by the applicant, or what was discussed here this evening?
No, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, there being a motion and a second, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenton.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our second matter under action items. That's a variance request from the town design criteria for a landscaped cul-de-sac at Stafford Park. And again, Mr. Valentine, I'd ask, you did submit that material to the board, but I'd ask for just a kind of a general overview for the record.
Sure, yep. Share my screen once again. Let's delete this one out. So same project, back at the end of the cul-de-sac, the developer's requesting to do a landscaped cul-de-sac in the middle. We've had them in the past. We've had some issues with maintenance of them in long-term, keeping them maintained as grass or trees, stone. So in recent years, we've taken them out of our design criteria. So currently, they're not allowed by our, the design criteria, which falls under the purview of this board. But this developer is asking to make an exception, grant a variance to that. I've sent some photos, and I'll pop those up in a second, but he's showing at the end of the cul-de-sac, a landscaped island in the middle, and he's proposing to link that by deed to Lot Number 10. So Lot Number 10, the house at the end of the cul-de-sac, would be responsible through their deed for future maintenance of the cul-de-sac. So whatever landscaping's there, he sent us a sample language of it, that, you know, they would install it, they would maintain it throughout the development until the last home is built. Once the last home is built and completed, they would then require the maintenance of that by Lot Number 10. So if I click over, so here is some sample photographs that he sent to us showing what he's proposing between grass. He's showing a few pine trees, some rocks in the middle of that island is a sample view of what he is proposing to do for the landscaping in the middle of that island, and we'll kind of scroll slowly through that. I'm not sure exactly where this is located, but these are the photos that he sent along as what his request is to install on that island. But currently, our design criteria does not allow for landscaped islands, so that's why it falls under the purview of this board, whether to grant a variance for this, to have that installed.
Okay, thank you. I think it is important to maybe give a little bit more updated information on the design criteria. So I think as the board, or some members of the board, recall that that was an option at one time, either landscaped or not landscaped. And I think over the years, with snow plowing, general condition of that, so well-meaning or intended, residents might cut the lawn for a period of time, but as people age, as people move, we had issues. We further had issues that even though we might do some damage during the winter plowing, when we went back to fix it, we would find other damage that was done either by landscaping trucks and trailers that might try to make the circle, garbage trucks, and other things like that. So the board at the time moved to doing a solid pave at those locations to minimize some of that damage and not be in a situation where the neighborhood was all upset because no one was maintaining. So that's a little bit more of the backstory, especially maybe for Bob, and to refresh Debbie from her, she may have been in that crossover period when we had landscaping versus no landscaping when she was on the town board previously. So entertain other questions or comments about what's being proposed or requested by the developer. Councilwoman Draw.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So, Mr. Valentine, so am I to understand then that if they're going to, they just have a landscape, meaning just the trees and the stone, they would have no grass at all in this circle? They're just showing an example?
I'm believing he's going to have some grass as part of it. So this is the photographs that he provided. So I'm assuming it has some grass, some stone, trees, kind of a mix. This is a sample of what he had. Obviously, if this board has thoughts and says, we'll allow it only with stone and landscaping only, you know, he can take that directive and decide whether he wants to move forward or not, or, you know, if this board, you know, would like to see grass. I'm sure he'll take, you know, whatever. He thinks it's an asset to the neighborhood. He thinks it's an aesthetic, you know, betterment to his home lots and, you know, to the neighborhood that's being installed, so.
Because I'm not quite clear, so if they deed that over to the Number 10 down the road, is it, I mean, in the deed, can they, can they remove the trees and the stone and do whatever they want since they will technically own it?
Well, that's where, sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So that's what, I guess I'm unclear about that, because once you deed something over, is it, are they, and then, you know, eventually, there's different owners come by and trees die, does that mean grass dies? People don't, I mean, do they have to maintain a certain standard?
So I think, I think this is what Mr. Horowitz would advise us, is that, you know, once that road is dedicated to the town, that cul-de-sac, that roadway, those gutters and everything, that is the town of Pennfield. What Mr. Newfeld is looking to do is to assign the responsibility of maintenance for that cul-de-sac to a particular property or property owner, so that you don't get into a situation of who's going to do what. Is everybody going to chip in? Is one person going to do it? How is that going to work? And, you know, so I think what he's attempting to do is that first buyer that comes in, they'll understand pretty quickly upfront, that'll be part of that contract. Where I have concern is future buyers, or if people age out, but the future buyers come in, and you take a look at a multi-page deed, 10, 15, 20 pages, and is that caught by that prospective owner? Are they aware of it coming in? Or do they get that nudge from the rest of the neighbors to say, you know, hey, Mr. Smith, cul-de-sac needs mowing, or the trees need pruning, or the garden needs weeding? And so I think, I think, you know, from a maintenance standpoint, it sets it up for a headache. I get the fact that it looks nice. I get the fact that it might be attractive for selling houses, but at the end of the day, it's a maintenance headache, and the town ends up being in the middle of that. That's why I think the board at the time, and rightfully so, moved in the direction of not having any landscaping in the cul-de-sac.
Mr. Supervisor, I've just got a couple real quick comments. I think that this is a situation where the plan looks good on paper, but in the real world and reality, it doesn't quite work out that way. I agree, I think that, you know, when you look at it on paper, it looks nice, the aesthetics of it look nice, but at the end of the day, you're putting a lot of trust in one person to maintain that, and we don't have any guarantees that that person's going to maintain it. And then you're going to start having a lack of maintenance on that particular piece of property. You're going to have potentially some neighbor issues because nobody's maintaining that. And as we've seen in the past over the years, many times where we do have some of these landscaping areas within cul-de-sacs, they tend to just be ignored, and, you know, there's kind of an absentee maintenance to it, and it just becomes dead grass or dirt, and becomes very unsightly. I certainly do understand the fact, but the plows that they need to get around, they need to plow, they need to move the snow, and these type of, you know, these type of vegetation in the middle does not make that easy to do, but also raises the issues with the plows potentially, you know, hitting some of that grass, and then who pays for the upkeep or the renewal of putting the grass in? And so at the end of the day, I think in, in the real world, there's a lot more problems than what it looks like on paper. And so I certainly would support not moving forward with the landscaping on this cul-de-sac just based on past experience on this town board, and what I've seen in other neighborhoods on these type of cul-de-sacs, and it's putting a lot of trust in one person that we just don't know if that person's going to follow through at this point, which could create a neighborhood problem, which we certainly don't want to have. So I'm supportive of not doing the landscaping in the cul-de-sac. I think that's consistent with past practice, consistent with what this town has been looking to do over the last years, and so I would support not allowing the landscaping in the cul-de-sac for this particular development.
And I agree with all what was just said, and I don't want to go backwards. We already kind of made that decision not to have vegetation in the cul-de-sacs. I mean, that was, that was a while ago, that's 10, 10 years or more ago. I don't really see a reason to go back and relook at it and bring in vegetation. I think it might lend more difficulties for the town, and it may not be, make the neighbors there that happy either.
All right.
So I agree with Andy that I don't support this.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Cole. Other comments?
And if I can, Mr. Supervisor, so again, I was getting to my point when I was asking about that question, is that I've lived on this cul-de-sac where we had trees and grass, and the neighbors have contributed and moved and mowed and so forth and helped, but then this neighborhood changes, as you say, people move out, we moved out. I now live on a cul-de-sac where it's paved, no issues, you don't deal with the exact, who's going to be responsible for, people coming and going, and I don't want to mow this week. We would have did a lot of that, you know, I don't want to help out, and the tree dies, all that kind of. So I would agree, that was my point I was really getting to on this, that coming from someone that lived on, has lived in both, that although it's beautiful and this looks great, but as far as long-term, and I feel it's best for, you know, the residents, I might feel, or someone else might feel different than me about what, you know, what they'd like to do to contribute. So I agree, staying with keeping it as, as maintenance-free as possible for the, and to help the town with plowing and so forth and roadwork.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Supervisor, I would echo all the previous comments and probably just add one more to it that is something I'm more exposed to, but that's the emergency vehicle access. When there is an incident inside a cul-de-sac, it kind of restricts you to be able to give the necessary vehicles to the house that has the emergency. You know, when it's on a straightaway on a street, you can kind of position vehicles before, in front of, and just after, but when you're in a cul-de-sac like that, you kind of block it up and kind of reduces your access. So I would agree that we stay the course with what the current code is for that and have it paved.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob. All right, so seeing no further comments at this point, I would entertain a motion not to provide a waiver from our design criteria to have a landscaped cul-de-sac, and to have the developer put it in according to our current specs, and I would entertain a motion for that. Moved?
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilwoman Draw. I'll ask board, any last-minute comments, discussion on this matter? Seeing none, I'll ask our town staff, our town engineer, and Development Services, any additional comments that you would like to make that haven't already been added to the record or submitted as part of this application?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none, and we have a motion to deny this request. It's been seconded. Okay, seeing none, and we have a motion to deny this request, and it's been seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
No.
Cole.
No.
LaFountain.
No.
Moore.
No.
Ackenden.
No.
Five, no.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Board, for that discussion. Okay, we will move on to Item C. Item C is a sidewalk waiver request for Forest Ridge subdivision, and again, I'll look to Mr. Valentine for a quick update, and while he's getting his map up on the screen, I'll just indicate that he has submitted this information to the Board for their review prior to the meeting, so we had a chance to take a look at that, and then I would ask him if he would kind of give us a walkthrough overview of what's being proposed.
Thank you. So, kind of similar to the first one, another sidewalk waiver request, just to orient the Board and the audience, north is to the right of the screen, Jackson Road is running along the top, but that would be the North-South Road, Plank Road, East-West Road is on the right-hand side. So, this is a proposed, another application before the Planning Board that is pending. This came in for a sketch plan, I believe, last year, a preliminary approval plan last year, and is currently pending as a final site plan before the Planning Board right now. The applicant is requesting, as Mr. Supervisor shared earlier, one side of the road. So, our requirement, and I highlighted in red, is basically the frontage of their property on Plank Road, and then the frontage of their property, there's a few out parcels on Jackson Road, and then the other side of the road for what is full compliance. So, my shaky hand there a little bit, I must have had a little too much coffee that day, but, so I tried to trace in just to make it a little more visible. So, they're proposing to install the sidewalks where it is green, so based on the size of their development, they would like to have the sidewalks one side internal, but ask for a waiver for the external sidewalks along Plank and Jackson, where we don't have sidewalks currently, and then the other side of, of the development internally. So, with that, again, going back to the Board's approved waiver policy, we look at the total number of lots, we look at the external footage, what's on both frontages, and then the total internal footage. Using the current county bid price, $39.50, comes up with basically a full compliance cost of $447,000. We then go into giving the developer credit for the sidewalks he is installing, so at the bottom, he is proposing to install 3,680 feet at $39.50 a lineal foot, so he's installing $145,360 worth of sidewalks if he does the one side. So, basically, the half of full compliance is $223,570. So, doing the math from the 223,570, giving him credit for what he's putting in, if the waiver was granted, he would install sidewalks on one side where it was shown as green, he would still owe $78,210 to our sidewalk waiver fund. So, again, that would be paid, you know, per building permits, over 72 lots, just over $1,000 per home lot, so each building permit comes in, he'd pay the $1,000 for that, as well as installing the sidewalks within the development on the one side. Now, flip back to the other screen. So, he would install everything that's in the green, the stuff that's red, he would get the waiver for, and then he would, you know, pay into the general sidewalk fund, and then this Board could allocate that, that funds somewhere else within the town.
Okay, and a logical question for all of us, Mark, is on the north, south, and east, west, so north, south on Jackson, east, west on Plank, where are the closest sidewalks for reference by the Board and for the record?
Yep, to the north on Jackson Road, there are no sidewalks between there and Webster. To the south, there is a small piece at Waybridge Court, there is a small section there, but south of that, the next piece you pick up is basically by the DPW facility, so at Penfield Center Road is the next spot you get sidewalks on the, on the east side of the road. On Plank Road, there is no sidewalks. Jackson, on Plank, east of, east of Jackson, going west of Jackson, the closest sidewalks you would next pick up is at Shoe Craft Road. So, the Crown Point Development just installed sidewalks from, on Plank Road to the corner of Shoe Craft Road, so you've got about, you know, a mile or three-quarters of a mile down the west side of, or west on, on Plank Road to get down to Shoe Craft.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mark. I appreciate that. Board, some initial thoughts regarding, regarding this?
A couple questions that I have, Mr. Supervisor, is as I'm looking at this particular property, the question that comes to my mind is, on the cul-de-sac Pine Point Circle, is it really necessary to have a sidewalk on that portion of the development? I mean, I would argue that it's not necessary to have a sidewalk into that cul-de-sac based on the limit, the small amount of homes that are going to be there, and certainly that money could free up and be allocated towards the general sidewalk fund in addition to what was discussed earlier. But I'm just interested, I'm just throwing that out there, I'm just interested, Mark, in your comments and so forth, but I, I'm not sure I'm convinced that a sidewalk into that cul-de-sac is absolutely necessary.
Any, any, any thoughts that you might like to offer up one way or the other? I'm not looking to put you on the spot, but just any, any thoughts or first reactions that you might have to Mr. Moore's question?
Yeah, I mean, this Board has, has waived sidewalks on cul-de-sacs before. You don't have the through traffic, you know, on, on those spots, or, you know, the cut-through that you worry about on some other places or the access, so obviously, we've got our formula. I don't have right in front of me where I can modify it on the fly, but obviously, we've got the formula set up. I could subtract that piece out and then, you know, add that back into, you know, what his cost is. Obviously, that would shorten what he's installing and, you know, his upfront cost on that, and then that would then add into the waiver fund that would go into the general fund after that. So, if the Board is supportive of waiving that piece as well, or do you leave it up to the developer if he, if he really wants that piece and that's part of what he, he is feeling, do we leave it up to him? Or, you know, if the Board says no, we're waiving it altogether, then, you know, obviously then it's more funds for the, the general sidewalk fund.
Okay. Board, any, any thoughts from Andy's proposal to elimination of those sidewalks along the cul-de-sac stretch?
Mr. Supervisor, could, could I just see that on the screen, the sketch plan again, Mark?
Yep, I'm just.
Of how many houses exactly are on that cul-de-sac? There was, there's still.
One, two, three.
So, how, about how big is that cul-de-sac? It's probably a.
18, 18 homes on the cul-de-sac.
Eighty homes and a little bit of a stretch, so it's probably at least a half, I don't know.
It's probably 1,000 feet.
Thousand?
So, if you've got 10 homes on a side, most homes are 100 by 200, so you've got, so 800 to 1,000 feet of.
And I guess my, my perspective on this is that on the, the past builder's proposal there off Jackson Road, we're not, we're not putting in sidewalks, we're not forcing the developer to put in sidewalks, and that money's being used towards future sidewalks on Jackson Road. I guess I kind of look at this as almost very similar to that, that, you know, it is a cul-de-sac, it, obviously, people coming and going on that road are going to be limited, you know, to the people that live there. I mean, sure enough, there's going to be some extra traffic with friends and family coming in, visiting, I get that, but again, I would just offer that I, I don't believe, based on what I've seen and what I've heard, that the sidewalks are necessary on this particular cul-de-sac moving forward.
Might I, might I offer up a, a thought to consider to the Board? And I want to just kind of springboard off a comment that Mr. Valentine had made, and that is, we could table this matter this evening, we could go back and ask the question, is the sidewalks on that cul-de-sac an integral part of the plan that the developer had? And if it does not, and if it is not, then an opportunity to take that, add that to the formula, and we would then identify a few more dollars that would come into our general sidewalk fund. So, just a reminder, any dollars that this Board brings in from a sidewalk waiver, that gets put into a specific account to be used for sidewalks only. It doesn't have to be sidewalks in this general area, it could be sidewalks anyplace across the town where the town, where the town Board identifies a need based on the number of walkers, safety-related issues by schools, I mean, all of those types of things. And then, we could use, we could use that, again, to put sidewalks in those more critical areas. So, a thought, a thought might be, ask the developer, let, let them come back, you know, if they have some specific criteria as to why they wanted the sidewalk in that area. If not, then allow staff to recalculate the formula, bring that back to the next work session.
I think that's reasonable.
I would support that, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you.
Okay. So, if, if everyone is in agreement, I might ask for a motion to table this matter to our next work session, which I believe is the 24th of June, and give staff an opportunity to have a discussion with the developer.
I move that we table this, this item until the next work session.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Cole, Councilwoman Cole, and seconded by Councilman Andy Moore to table this matter. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote to table.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Five aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on under action items, continue on with Item D, release of an easement at 1467 Empire Boulevard. We'll shift tables here in the auditorium to call on Mr. Costello for a brief update.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As you recall, the Board in 2019 approved, gave site plan approval for the development and relocation of the Laurelton Animal Hospital at that location. Being the efficient group that we are, as soon as the site plan was signed off by staff and other agencies, one of the conditions was that they had to provide us with a stormwater inspection easement on the site, so that we can go in every, every so often and make sure that stormwater facility is working properly. We recorded that document shortly after we signed off on the plans, and then shortly after that, they started construction and found that they had to relocate both the building and the stormwater facility as well. So, as a result, we have had to go back to them and tell them they have to sign a new easement for us, we have to release the old one at the county clerk's office because a portion of the building's actually in the area where the easement's located. So, the other day, Supervisor LaFountain actually signed off on that easement for me. I do have to do a resolution for you, with your permission, to have that easement released at the county clerk's office, subject to us recording the new easement in its place, and we actually have received the fundings to do that from the applicant. So, I'm requesting that you give him the authorization to allow that easement to be replaced with the one that we have had signed off recently.
So, so from a little bit more background, as you recall, the, the builder, developer, his contractor, engineer brought forth to us the fact that they had run into some materials that they needed to make an adjustment at, at a work session of the Board, because we were the authorizing board of approval for this application. We at least reviewed those plans and acknowledged the fact that they had to make some changes, and then as Mr. Costello picked up and so adequately highlighted for us, that in turn then made some adjustments to the easement. So, that's kind of a full circle from start to finish with this, this project. Questions by the Board? Okay, seeing none, would entertain a motion of approval to go through and provide a release of easement and then filing of a new easement in its place, and then we will follow that up with a town board resolution that the Board will see at its next legislative session. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Moore.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Draw. I'll ask any further discussion by the town Board on this matter. I'll ask staff, staff, any additional input that we haven't already heard or was entered into the record?
We've covered everything.
Okay. Having a motion in a second, I'd ask for a roll call vote of approval for this matter.
Draw.
Aye.
Excuse me, Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Five aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Item E. This is a request for modification to an approved landscaping plan at 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard. We'll stay with the Costello table this evening and ask Mr. Costello if he would give us a brief update. I also see that Mary Nguyen, the property owner, has joined us as part of the Zoom meeting. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Costello, a few.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. The Board granted a special permit and did some site improvements through an approval process with Mary almost a year and a half ago now at this point in time. One of the outstanding features, one of the last things to be addressed, is the fact that the Board did request a berm and some fencing along the back property line to provide buffer from the neighbors to the south, I'm sorry, to the south of her property. The berm has been installed, it's about a three-foot berm. Initially, Mary had received an approval to install western cedars, which are somewhat like arborvitae, that grow to a height of about 40 feet. Shortly after, well, not shortly, but a while afterwards, Mary had indicated that she'd like to switch that out for decorative grasses. She's going to have a PowerPoint presentation, a very brief one, to identify what she's interested in doing to swap out the initial western cedars, so you get a better feel for what she's trying to accomplish on the site. With that, why don't we bring up, Mary, why don't we bring up your PowerPoint?
Thank you.
And you can talk through it.
So, I talked with the landscape architect, and western cedars actually require, they like wet feet, and they actually get as large as 200 feet tall and 15 feet wide. So, they're actually going to grow, they're not going to stay looking like an arborvitae, they're going to look like a pine tree that you would find in the western woods. And the, when I did the research on it, well, first, the horticulturist said, you know, you can't expect a berm that's so shallow and that tall, and it's hard to see the berm in this image, but it's not a very wide berm, it has a three-to-one ratio and not a five-to-one ratio. She said you can't expect that berm to support a root system of a tree. You need to plant like grasses, something that is going to hold onto the soil and retain the soil. Also, the intention of the berm was to protect the back neighbors, and as you can see from this image, the back neighbors are really, really far away. They, and we changed the direction of the way the cars, overflow cars would park, so they're not pointing in the direction of the neighbors, they're pointing east and west because it gave us some more parking spots. So, they're very far away, and this is the direction that the cars would park in overflow situations, and they would only be guest parking. So, guests, tenants are coming and parking in the garages. They're not even, they're not coming back here at all. And you can see at a 30-inch height, that's what the headlamp is pointing at if it's facing the south neighbors. So, it's pointing at the swing set system that they put in. So it's pointing at the swing set system that they put in that's 25 feet wide and nine feet tall. And they started that swing set system 96 inches from the fence line. These are the grasses that the horticulturists recommended we use, because the pampas grass, which has the white flume, grows eight to 12 feet tall, and we would plant them where the swing set would see our property or where our property would see the swing set. And then to the left of that are maiden grass, and maiden grass grows five to seven feet tall. So it would be, and there's a next slide that shows a really long row of maiden grass. That's what a long row of maiden grass looks like in the summer, and then on the right, it gets the colored flowers. So that incorporated with the pampas grass is going to add a nice architectural value to the long 135-foot length berm, and it's going to retain the soil because it's, it's high and it's narrow. And it's also going to allow us to, to mow behind the berm because we, we have about six feet behind the berm, which our fence goes to, you know, or goes to our fence, and we want to be able to mow it. We want to be able to have the landscapers maintain it. If we put something that's going to grow so wide that it's going to grow into the fence, we won't be able to maintain the property properly.
And, and Mary, just for, for the record, you said six feet, not six zero, but six feet behind the grass, behind the berm?
Behind the berm, we have six feet of lawn. So the lawn mower, and it's grassed already and it's, it's grown in. The lawn mower can mow that.
Okay.
And the berm sits up two to three feet tall, depending on the elevation of the land, and the grasses will sit on that.
Right. Okay. I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure I, I heard correctly the, the amount of space behind.
Right.
Okay.
This image is what western cedars look like before they grow 40 or more feet tall. And the right is the image that shows what they look like when they're growing 40 or more feet tall. It's not going to give a privacy hedge. It's, the horticulturist told me, she said, Mary, I can assure you, I guarantee you, they will die. They will not be able to support their root system in a berm. It's just not possible. They're not deer resistant, and they're very drought resist, they're very drought affected, and we can't keep enough water in that berm. She said you won't be able to maintain them.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask staff, at this point, Mr. Costello, did the PRC, and then in particular Bruce Zaretsky, our landscape architect for the town, did they have a chance to take a look, review, and comment?
Tony, the PRC did not get a chance, but I did ask Bruce to go out and visit the site. There is a, an attached letter, and here it is. And in essence, it's not easy to read, obviously, where you're sitting, but in essence, he's basically recommending that the evergreens would be a solution for screening 12 months a year, whereas he's concerned that the, the grasses will be good during the summer months, maybe the fall months, but you won't, you know, you won't have buffer throughout the winter months and early spring. Mary does make a good point, though, and I think there's even another picture that I wanted to show you. If you can go after that for a second, we'll come back to this. But the next picture, I measured out on an aerial, the distance between the residents, you don't have it? There's a distance between the residents on the next street over, behind her. They are approximately 140 feet to the, to the fence, to the property line where the residence is located. And then Mary has another, I think it's 70 feet or so, it's, it's about 230 feet from, from building to building where the garages are on her property. The other issue is that they are 10 feet below in grade to Mary's property, where their home is located. The backyard is pretty much even to Mary's backyard, but where their home is located is approximately 10 feet lower than the grade where the garages are constructed. So there is a change in grade. There's quite a distance between the two properties, you know, and, and I do know that one of the situations that this board dealt with, when we put in landscaping over behind 1802 Penfield Road, there was a berm that you requested to buffer the neighbors from Liberty Street. Actually, Dave Renner's dad's property was immediately behind it. And we did put a berm up, and there were evergreens planted on that berm, and I believe every single one of them died after about a year and a half or two years. And they lost their ability to go in for their bond, to be able to have it replaced because it exceeded the two-year maintenance bond requirement. So they've been sitting over there, and I think there's, most of them are still dead. So there is some value to the fact that rain does sheet off of these berms, and then you can't get the root systems to, to support it. But Bruce is making a recommendation to use the evergreens.
Okay. All right. I'll ask the board, do you have any questions at this point for either staff or, or for
Jim, was, was Mr. Zaretsky asked about the use of grasses specifically? Or was that, is that kind of new to the discussion?
No, Mary and I both submitted the materials that Mary had requested to him. He had that information. Mary followed up with me, with him, to give him additional information. And this is the memo that came out after she did that.
Western cedar is not deer resistant. Please states it's not deer resistant. There's a lot of literature that says that it, it, it really needs a wet foot, and I'm not going to be able to give it a wet foot in a berm. It's going to dry out. I'm not sure, I think Bruce may think that we need some kind of, I'm not sure what Bruce is thinking, because it's not deer resistant. And that was his concern with the other plants I wanted to put in on flat ground, is that they weren't deer resistant. And then a board member came and said that they felt that I needed to put a berm in to further increase the ability of the neighbors not to see headlamps. But there's no way neighbors are seeing headlamps. I mean, they're just, the way we've got it designed, it's just not happening.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Board, other, other questions or comments about what's being proposed this evening?
It almost seems like it'd be nice if Mary and Jim and Bruce could all sit down and talk, because Jim and Mary make good points, and it doesn't make sense that we have those evergreens if there's already examples of them not lasting under the similar circumstances.
I was going to echo the same thing, Linda. I agree, you know, I agree, because, you know, Mary, I've seen the work you've done, and so I know you, the due diligence you do to, to follow up on your, on that property. So I feel that your arborist probably, you know, has somewhere, you know, has value added to the conversation and.
She was, she was adamant, she said, you cannot put those in, they will not live. It's not a good idea to put those kind of plants in a berm. She said, grasses are going to give you soil retention, they're going to get tall, they're going to get full, they're going to give privacy when you need it in the summer when people are on the playground. Because really, I mean, that neighbor has kids that just scream all day long. I mean, it's more for us.
So we're talking, we're talking about, we're talking about what's the right material, Mary. I'm not going to get into neighborhood.
Right. No.
So, hold right there. I'm going to just ask the question, how did we, how did we get to a point that we were proposing those pines? And how did it get this far that at the time it was good, and now we find out that it's not good?
I can comment on that. I had.
I'm sure. Yep, go ahead.
I had purchased 30 plants for our house in Sodas that we ended up not using, that I owned. And I, I offered to put them on the ground, on the flat, and then one of the board members felt that a berm would be necessary to give further visual reduction of headlamp light.
Okay. So that was, that was a discussion probably with the planning board at the time?
Right.
Okay.
But if you shoot it at 30 inches, if you put an 18-inch plant, they wouldn't be able to see the headlamps. It, it doesn't need to be tall. It can be small.
All right. Board, any other comments at this point? Or?
Mr. Supervisor, I guess that just begs the question of, is a berm necessary?
It's too late. It's there.
Oh, it's there.
It cost me so much, you have no idea how much it's cost me. It's so ugly.
Yeah, I couldn't quite see in, in the photo really identified, you know, in the picture, but.
It's just one big, long runway.
Mr. Supervisor, in talking to Bruce, his comment was, and it was not in the memo, but it was a verbal comment to me that, you know, you can basically do what you want. I think either planting would be good, but, but he's looking for a 12-month planting berm versus a six-month or a seven-month. And his comment was, you know, you can do what you want, but they're both good products, but I'm just looking at a 12-month buffer versus a six- or seven-month buffer.
Okay.
So that's what it really came down to.
All right. All right. Board, any additional thoughts? Linda, you, you had indicated that, you know, getting Mr. Costello and Mary Nguyen and Bruce Zaretsky together to have a conversation as to what might be the right balance for that. It's sounding like the, the white pines are not the, the right balance. The grasses are partially the right balance. And is there, you know, some wisdom, I'll ask the board, is there some wisdom to ask for the three of them to get together and then come back to us at our next work session to finalize?
I think so.
I would agree.
Mr. Costello, you would facilitate getting that together?
I will.
Properly, physically distance, maybe, maybe doing it on, on-site if we could do it.
Yes.
That way it's outside. Properly, physically distance at this current time that we have.
We'll certainly call him tomorrow. I know he's busy because he is working, but I'll see what we can do to get him over to the site.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So I think, board, I'm hearing that, that might be, take that for two weeks to bring that to a, to a thorough review and kind of work through that. Again, for the, we're looking for a nice balance for the homeowner, the neighbors, and from, you know, the community of Penfield overall. So I would entertain a motion, yes, go ahead, Mr. Costello.
Before you do this, Mr. Supervisor, could I suggest also, it might be prudent if Mary's landscaper, who she's been working with?
Absolutely.
Meet with Bruce with us as well? She might be.
Oh, she, she's in, she's in Sodas, she's not going to come out. She's so busy, she won't come out.
Well, we may be able to talk to her on the phone while we're at your place.
You can conference call.
Okay. We can do a conference call.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to table this until the 24th of June.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Linda Cole, seconded by Andy Moore. Seeing no further discussion, again, this is a tabling matter until the 24th. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Costello. Thank you, Mary, for joining us today. Everyone, please be well, be well and be safe.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. We'll move on to action items. This is action item F. This is the town clerk request to opt out of the New York, excuse me, of the New York State DEC licensing sales. And word on the street is that the town clerk may be joining us via telephone versus Zoom. But as we're going through and, and seeing if that happens, just a reminder to the board that the town clerk at kind of the start of the COVID-19, sent the board back in early March, a letter, an email, basically asking for consideration to opt out of the option of DEC sales. This is for fishing, hunting licenses and things like that. And of course, due to the COVID, things kind of got tabled. The clerk followed back up on June 3rd with an email to the, to the town board and town attorney, again, identifying the suggestion of moving or opting out. She included some information as it related to the monthly reports that identified the number of sales, the, the amount of, if you will, revenue that came into the town, and asked that the board consider waiving that. So I think before us tonight, you know, the question is, do we opt out due to the low numbers? Do we continue on because it's a service to the town? And I would just open it up for discussions by the board. Before I do that, if the town clerk is on the line, and I would ask, because it was a very detailed email, if you have any short additional comments, and I'll underscore short.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Good evening. So just to give you a, give you a bit of background, the past several years, we've seen a decrease in the fishing and hunting license purchases, and it's due to a number of reasons. The biggest reason is the DEC has started to offer through their website, online sales, and they've made the access very easy for our sporting licenses to be sold online. Also, we have retail stores with longer hours that are nearby. So for instance, Walmart at Baytown, their hours is 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., and they sell those licenses during that time as their sporting goods, which is 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So it's easier for a person to buy their hunting licenses, fishing licenses before or after work. And then lastly, several years ago, DEC offered the purchase of lifetime fishing and hunting licenses, which I did not mention in my email, but the thing about the lifetime fishing and hunting licenses is that then they don't have to even come back and renew their license. So they're all set on that. In 2010, DEC sent an email letting us know that there was a law change allowing municipal agents to opt out of the requirement for selling sporting licenses. And, and that is with approval by Commissioner of DEC. And with my talking to him, I, he said that it's fine because we do have all these other options, but we would need to have a resolution put in place. And, you know, this amended our regulations that address how licenses sold, and that's why they're allowing that. The only other thing I wanted to mention, we've had many issues of late with DEC computer and swipe, swipe options, and that's caused stress on our customers because when it goes down, then they have to leave and either come back, and most of them actually go elsewhere to get their license reset. There's a lot I have to say about this, however, we do have the email, so maybe I'll let you pose questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll now open it up to the board. Board thoughts, comments, concerns, questions, or otherwise?
Real quick, Mr. Supervisor, Amy, are you, are you saying that you can purchase a New York State DEC fishing license and hunting license through the New York State DEC website?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And that fishing licenses and hunting licenses can be purchased at retail stores that have, you know, outdoor recreation activities such as, you know, Walmart or Dick's Sporting Goods, things like that?
Yes, I am saying.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Can I say something?
Hold on.
So Amy, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I see that you, in your, in your, in your request for this, have, have stated from December 19th that you only had, you had six people, six residents that came in and probably purchased, or maybe not residents of our, of Penfield, but six people that came in and purchased licenses? Is that?
So I do want to mention, from what you just said, it's a good point. When we look at our numbers and we look at who comes in to purchase these license licenses. at our numbers and we look at who comes in to purchase these licenses...
Amy, I'm going to interrupt you. So answer the question on the table before you go off in another direction, please. So the question on the table from Councilman, Councilwoman Draw is that during the month of December, was it just six transactions that took place?
So in the month of December for 2019, there were five transactions that took place, a commission of $3.60.
Okay. And of those five, of those five that came through in December, did you say was, how many, do you know how many were Penfield residents?
I am not sure how many were Penfield residents, but as I did mention, most people are coming in from Wayne County and Livingston County.
Okay.
Board, other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to recognize our deputy town clerk that has asked to have a comment for the record, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and Andy kind of touched on it, in the time that we were closed for COVID, we were directed through DEC to send all, you know, requests to their website. In all that time, we got one phone call, someone asking to purchase a fishing license. And now, as Amy said, which was a little difficult to hear, all lifetime licenses, they don't even have to, they don't have to do anything. They automatically get their license renewed every year. It's sent directly from DEC, nothing else involved. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the, it's called a second chance doe permit, which I believe starts November 1st. They can come in and try and get another doe permit from areas that are still available. And in the past, DEC updates us every couple of days what maps still have permits available. And, you know, like every couple of days, they'd say, well, this area doesn't have anymore, so we certainly couldn't sell anything. But that didn't happen this year at all. Not all of those areas ever became awful, which was the first time I've seen it. So I think it's a dying sport.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sue. I'll ask the Board any other questions or comments at this point.
Mr. Supervisor, just a question, if Amy or Sue can possibly answer it. I guess I understand that there's no financial benefit for the town to be offering, you know, this service. Can I just get an idea of what, you know, what the, is there a cost that we're kind of absorbing by having this service be available, other than, you know, occasionally, I guess, the time when people come in? Is there anything else? Is there requirements that the clerk's office has to comply with that's time-consuming and cost the town money?
The only, they provide us with, you know, all the machines, the tags, the literature. What I don't know is when someone comes in and does a credit card purchase, I don't know if that costs us in some way. I know that, I think, I believe it's, we make 28 cents on a commission on a sale, which is like nothing.
Yeah. And I don't, you know, I guess I didn't see that as being something where we'd be out trying to make, you know, make money on that. But it is a nice service. I'm surprised that not more people utilize it. I know I have family members that have purchased them in the past. I guess I'm just, I'm stunned that there's not more. Numbers kind of surprise me.
Yeah, it's been decreasing, basically since 2010, which is when the new law occurred. Several years later, they could go and get their, all their information online and purchase their licenses online. And I think that they're also going to these retail shops because of the timing. They're able to go at 7:00 a.m. or go after work. So that's where some of the problem is. And then I think they are getting frustrated because of the computers going down so often, not Harwood, but DEC. And then they have to leave, as I mentioned, and either come back, or typically they'll go to one of the retail shops, or then they do it online. And there's no problems with the online purchases, as far as I know, from what they told, what some of these court units told me.
Okay. All right, Board. So it brings us back to the question at hand. Do we want to stay in the business, or do we want to opt out of the business?
Mr. Supervisor, if I can add some, you know, I kind of agree with Councilman Ackenden. I mean, I hate that, I mean, it may be low numbers that are utilizing the service, but I hate to take away services that we offer our residents now. And if it's not a cost prohibitive to our, to the department, to the town, I feel that we should, you know, that's something that I'd like to, I think that we should probably consider keeping that service for residents of Penfield.
Yeah. Debbie? Can I, I hear this, and I think the same thing, that it is a service. And it's a service that's not really a hardship on us, that no one's partaking in it. So maybe we could advertise it on the website, that you can go to the State DEC to get certain things, you know, help promote it that way. But if somebody comes to your office and wants to get the permit, they're able to. It's never good to take away a service that's been there for so long, even if it's not utilized as much as you would hope it would be. So if it's not that hard to have it in the office, even though it's not being used, why not keep it?
My concern, two concerns. The first concern is in regards to the fact that the DEC website, or the DEC program that we have on our computers goes down so many, so often. And so we have turned away a number of people who stood in line waiting to get it and get their license and then having to leave. That's number one. Number two, since December, their system has been down, so it's been difficult to balance. And they have also now decided to put together a new website for license sales. They're going to be giving us a new printer, and then we're going to need vendor support teams to install, set up the printers, create new vendor accounts. And all that is going to occur, well, we're not going to be able to do it until we finish with this COVID issue. And then I'm worried about other issues and frustrating customers even more.
Mr. Supervisor, you know, I can see this from both perspectives, as far as providing the service and then not providing the service, being that there are other outlets that have better hours, and certainly online provides a level of efficiency that, you know, walking in person, you know, cannot provide. I guess at this point, I'd like to offer that we table this for another two weeks to the next work session, so that, you know, we can get a little bit more information on it. I certainly know a handful of hunters and people that are avid fishermen, and quite honestly, I'd like to talk to them and see if, you know, where they come from on the issue as far as whether or not they get their licenses online. Maybe they do. I mean, you can do a lot of stuff with the State Department of Motor Vehicles online and not have to go into a DMV office. And maybe they do that. Maybe they go to the sporting stores. Maybe, you know, they do it when they pick up fishing equipment or hunting equipment at the sporting stores and renew their licenses, whatever that is. I think I'd like to get a little bit more information on that before we make a decision. But certainly, from the service that we provide the residents with, the ability to come into the town hall and get a fishing or hunting license, I think does have value also. So if, I offer that we table this for two more weeks, if the town board is willing to do that.
Are you offering that as a motion?
I am offering it as a motion, yes.
I second that.
Okay. I'll ask the Board any additional comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, the proposal on the table, moved and seconded, is to table this for a two-week period for additional review. And I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
La Fountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. This will be tabled. We'll bring it back up at June 24th. Amy, thank you for joining in. Sue, thank you for your comments. We'll move on to informational items now. We're often action items. The first item for information is the Shadow Pines Conceptual Master Plan Review for the Public Information Meeting's comments. And my name is tagged on this, so I will provide at least a little bit of kind of a snapshot as to where we are. In early March, the Board did convene a public information session that saw a number of people, residents, to come in and speak on behalf of the plan. We had representatives from BME, who was the consultant that was selected to put the plan together. There were a number of comments that were made at the meeting. And then we held the meeting open, and then COVID-19 hit. We were going to hold the meeting open until the end of March. COVID-19 hit. We did, right after the session, we did receive a number of comments, probably in the neighborhood of about 15 or 20 comments. Some people that had spoken at the information meeting, and some others that offered up comments. All of that material has been shared with the Board. Now that we're kind of back on schedule, I thought it was appropriate to bring this matter back to the table and to talk about what our next steps are, based on what we heard and then what we've received online. So that's kind of a three-month snapshot, if you will, of where we were and where we are. And with that, I'll ask the Board and open it up for thoughts, ideas, discussion, potentially next steps or otherwise.
Mr. Supervisor, if I can, first thing, I'd like to thank you for your leadership in moving this forward, both with the purchase of the Shadow Pines property and then setting up the Shadow Pines Land Use Advisory Committee and getting us to this point today. You know, the Shadow Pines Land Use Advisory Committee, I was the town board liaison to, was consisted of Penfield residents volunteering their time from different neighborhoods throughout the town and different interests. And they put in a lot of time and effort in putting this together, putting this recommendation together to where we are with a draft of the master plan. Absolutely without a doubt, I would like to thank the town staff, you know, Jim Costello, Zach, Mark Valentine, and others for all their efforts in meeting with the Shadow Pines Land Use Committee and helping put together a document to where we are today. I think we're off to a really good start with this property. And I've said from day one that when you have a 200-acre-plus property that's near and dear to many people, you're not going to always agree and be on the same page with everything. And in many ways, that's healthy. There were a lot of interests, different interests for the use of this property, from passive recreation to active recreation. We heard extensively from the sports groups, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, so forth, interested in additional fields and justifications. We heard from mountain bikers, from people that wanted shelters, and people that wanted just general open space, green space, and a lot more interest in the property for different uses. And that's great. It shows the community involvement, and the community really stepped up to express how they'd like to see this property look in the future. I think we all agreed that we did not want to see residential development on this property or commercial development on this property, houses, buildings, you know, things along those lines, that led to the significant support of approving this measure for the town to purchase the Shadow Pines property in its referendum a few years ago. So where we are today, I think we're off to a really good start. I think it is a compromise in a bunch of different uses, both on the north end of the property, or what I would like to call the front nine, and then also the south end of the property, or what I would call the back nine. And I think it's a complement to a lot of the different interests in trying to put together a compromise for the best use of this plan. Everybody gets a little bit of what they want, and, you know, for the best interest of the town as a whole. And so I think we are off to a very good start. I'm interested in looking at the next steps. Again, we're in the very beginning of this process, but I do think that it offers a little bit to everybody with some, you know, athletic fields, some recreation capabilities with disc golf and some mode areas that people can go and have a picnic, or just go and sit and read a book, so forth, to some mountain biking, which I think was important, and the Shadow Pines Land Use Committee recognized that. Not real technical mountain biking, but family-oriented mountain biking, which is growing more and more in our society as people try to get outside and recreate. To more passive recreation, when you look at the, you know, I would say the east end of the back nine, per se, with just kind of general landscape and general open space and green space. So I think it really complements what the vision was moving forward of this property. And again, I keep using the word compromise, and I apologize for that, but it's the word that I think fits the best when you have a lot of different interests on a piece of property. And so I'd like to thank you, Supervisor, for your leadership, certainly the town staff for their efforts, the Shadow Pines Land Use Advisory Committee for their time and volunteering to get us to this point. And I think we're off to a good start. So I just want to mention that. No real questions or anything, because I think we kind of have vetted out some stuff over the last few weeks, and certainly getting a lot of input from the public information meeting. And I know we have, you know, some more work to do, getting this to a point where we can actually start to look at doing some improvements. As I think you've been very honest about, there's going to be cost to doing this. Nothing's for free. And so there's going to be additional costs that we have to start budgeting for and start planning how we're going to handle those expenses moving forward. So those are just kind of my comments, Mr. Supervisor, moving forward. I look forward to continuing to develop this master plan. Again, I realize this is just the first step moving forward, but I think we're off to a good start, and I think it's a good compromise for all the different interests that were presented to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Board members, other thoughts or comments at
Mr. Supervisor, thank you. I just want to thank Councilman Moore for his leadership on that land use advisory committee and all the members that assisted him in their hard work to get that plan to where it is today. Certainly, the thanks goes out to all the committee, or, I'm sorry, all the residents that attended our public hearing. There was a lot of feedback, not only at the meeting, but there was some electronic communications that were valuable to get and to read. That was all provided to us. I've had a chance to kind of go back and review the plan from BME again recently. As you said, we had a little bit of a pause with the COVID break, but had a chance to kind of look it over again. And I do have some, excuse me, some questions or maybe just comments that perhaps could go back to our staff in conjunction with BME. I had a couple of questions on, you know, maybe moving some of these items around just a little bit. The disc golf, which, you know, I think is a good item. I mean, the plan is kind of close up to the properties along Harwood Circle and Sky Ridge, seem to be a little bit close to their line. I'm not sure if there's much of a buffer, but that might be something, you know, maybe we could have them look at again, so that that course isn't, you know, impinging on the neighbors there too much. I know the pickleball courts has been a topic that's been of interest. You know, I think that might be... You know, I think that might be something to look at, maybe six to eight courts. I think trying to figure out where those go is going to be maybe the little bit of the challenge. I think it needs to be near a parking area. You know, there was some discussion, possibly having it out near where the tent was at Shadow Pines, but I think that might be better tied to whatever goes on with the Clark House. Maybe there's something that that area would be used for with a new occupant in the Clark House, so that, I think, should be looked at again. And I think the other item that was, you know, pretty loud and clear from our residents that came in that night and spoke, was the item of the community center being on the north end of the property there. It's no secret that our community center is kind of bulging at the seams, as it is today. Our group provides a lot of great programs. There's probably a lot more we could do with the new facility. I think it's something we should continue to look at going forward, whether there's expansion options, you know, at Baird Road, or maybe there's another location. But I think it would be my personal opinion that we consider taking the rec center building out of this comprehensive plan at this point. And again, but not lose sight of it, and continue to see maybe where that would fit in another location. Again, I agree with Councilman Moore, that there's some things we, you know, could probably start doing, that wouldn't be, you know, cost prohibitive at this point. Some of these things might just be some, you know, easy additions. So, as we don't know financially, you know, how COVID's going to affect us in the long term here, but maybe we can start looking at some, you know, adding some of these things that are lesser cost.
Thank you, Councilman Ockenden. Thank you. Other board members, thoughts, comments?
Yes, I agree with what was just said, but also, I think we need more, some sort of signage and parking, because as it is, people seem to enjoy the passive recreation. They want to walk the trails. We need to make sure those trails are in good shape, but also, where they should start walking, to when they end. The one thing he had on the plan there, at the public hearing, was the public information meeting, was about different places for parking, and I think we should look at that, because you can't just park at the Clark House. There's a need for additional parking, with so many people that want to get out there, if they want, for their children, and their dogs, and so on. So I thought that was something important. But as is, I think what was recommended was enough for what the land can handle, and what we can afford. And we probably will have difficulty affording to do the parking lot, or some sort of. But I think those are the things we should be emphasizing right now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, can I ask a question about where we stand? And I know there's been some interest in the Clark House, and part of that, of the Shadow Pines. How are we, do we still have people interested? I know at one point, there was a brewery slash restaurant, maybe?
Sure.
Interested in that?
So, I think there are two points to just make sure everybody's aware of. Point number one, Mr. Costello, myself, and a couple of other members of staff did meet with plan architectural, with the idea of taking a look at the facility, what needed to be done, either inside or outside, to help from a preservation. So we do have a report on that, and looking at ways to make sure we're doing the right things for that building. The second thing is, is that we were having conversations with the group. They still do have an interest. Obviously, COVID created a little bit of a three-month break here. Mr. Costello has been in contact with that group, and they still do have an interest to have communications. So as things continue to open up, town hall open up, staff is back, we get into our phases, we're now broaching phase three, that will start this Friday, that we're getting back on track to pick up those conversations. So, that's not a dead issue, it's still an item that is out there and does have interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, Mr. Supervisor, I just would like to go back to one of the comments that Councilman Ockenden did mention about striking out the recreation building in there. I join him in advocating for that, and I'd like to thank him for raising that issue tonight, formally, as a part of agenda discussions. And so I would like to add my support to striking out the recreation building on the site in the northeast corner of the proposed map on the draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Next steps, board? I think I heard the start of some formation of asking staff slash BME consultants to go back with, and take into account comments that were made at public information meeting, some of the other items. And now we've heard from the board about the community center. Is the sense to go back and have BME update the plan, taking into account a number of the comments tonight, what we heard at the public information meeting, and what we received via email after the public information meeting?
Mr. Supervisor, I would make that motion.
Okay. So it's been moved by Councilman Ockenden, that I'm going to, at least make sure I understand your motion. So your motion would be to table this evening, and ask staff and the consultant to pick up, and come back with an updated or modified plan?
Yes, absolutely. With the topics that were discussed tonight, that would be my motion, yeah.
Okay, so, it's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it, Mr. Supervisor. I agree.
Okay, so it sounds like we have at least two seconds, one for Mr. Moore, and one for Debbie Draw. Thank you very much. I'll ask, are there any additional comments to be made at this point?
The only other comment I have, Mr. Supervisor, just going back to the disc golf area, I guess I would ask BME to take a look. And I believe, based on our discussion at that public information meeting, BME was not proposing that that area be exclusively for disc golf. I believe I heard, I was checking my notes earlier before this meeting, that it was kind of a general-use area, where people could go, and obviously play disc golf. And I think North Ponds Park is a little bit similar to that, in some ways, where you could play, but also somebody could sit there in a chair and read a book, or have a picnic, or something like that, in that general vicinity. So, just want to kind of throw that out there for future consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to add a couple of comments, if I may, and so this is just more fact-based. This is not, I'm not intending to do anything other than make sure that everyone is aware of the bigger, broader picture. So I think Councilman Ockenden did indicate that we are, in fact, busting at the seams at the community center. I'll remind everyone, not only the board, but also those viewing, that that is the case. The property at the community center that we own is today basically covered with building and parking lot. There is no opportunity to add on, there is no opportunity to acquire any property, because we're surrounded by school district that has to have a certain amount of land ratio for number of students. And then just to the north of us, we have Oakwood Cemetery. So, to do anything at that site, really is pretty much impossible to do. And at the public hearing, we heard a couple of individuals, and they've indicated this now several times, that with the roughest plan, it was intended to build a community center. And I'll remind those individuals that when the town board, and I was part of the town board at the time, we identified a building to be a park center. That building was intended to be a combination of a shelter and also program space. It was not intended to have what I would call community center intent. It was a small building, about 10,000 square feet. It was strategically placed on the site. And if, in fact, we were to look to do a community center there, there were some other things that will have to be reworked or impacted at that site. I'll also remind everybody, because everybody likes to either not acknowledge or ignore, but when we did acquire that site, the Shadow Pine site, we indicated it was intended for general municipal use and purposes. That also included the possibility of a library or a community center. So, as we look to modify the plan, and not have that there, and we look, because we are busting at the seams, today, we may not have the land to put a community center, we may have to acquire. Which means that, to acquire land, there is an opportunity for another potential bond vote for that, in addition to what you would have to spend for a building. So, from a fact-based standpoint, it's just important to put that out as a reminder for everyone, as we go through. So, on the motion that has been made by Councilman Ockenden, seconded by Councilman Moore, Councilwoman Draw, we will table, we'll ask BME and staff to go back, take a look, make some adjustments up to and including removal of the community center, and we will move on from there. So I'll ask for a roll call to table this matter this evening.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we will move on to our second item under informational items. It's a sign ordinance update, proposed ordinance revision. And this has a combination of Costello and LaFountain. And I'm going to let our good friend, Mr. Costello, kick it off, because he's been the most active with it.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As you know, this has been a held item for quite some time before the board. I'm happy to report that, unfortunately, because of COVID, it did give staff a lot of extra time to be able to work on the updates that were necessary for the ordinance. It also gave us the ability to work on a document we've been involved with now for several months, which is a new telecommunications ordinance. Dick Horowitz and staff have been working together feverishly to get that resolved, and that is completed. And the intent, our intent at this point in time, is to come to you to set a public hearing on the 17th of June, for the July 15th meeting, to address that particular section of the code. Also, our intent to come to you shortly after that, to request a public hearing to address several code revisions that have been waiting in the wings for a long time now, since we actually adopted the ordinance, after it was recodified several years ago. So, one of the issues at hand, actually, is the one that's following this issue, is regarding the customary agricultural operation, as it relates to the use of poultry in residential zones. We will be addressing that as part of this, so that we could get it all together at one point in time for you, and be able to address that, hopefully sometime even in late July or early August. So I'm happy to report, we're going to get this off the agenda as soon as possible.
Okay.
Finally.
All right, thank you. So, you did touch on item C. I'll hold on that item, because I know some of the board members would like to at least talk about that, but at least, I think staff has taken into account the discussions that we've had at a high level by the board, and I think led by Councilman Ockenden, who had brought it to the table for us to take a look at. So, right now, you're looking to get a resolution into the board, at least for the wireless, by next meeting?
Yes.
To establish a public hearing?
Absolutely.
And then, the other matters, to get a resolution in shortly after that?
Very shortly after that.
Okay. So this, the board, I'll ask, at this point, are there any questions that you have of Mr. Costello, on any of the ordinance, dot the i's, cross the t's, update, clarifications that they're doing? And then, we'll also have an opportunity to have a public hearing on the wireless piece. Any additional questions or comments for Mr. Costello, as he continues to finalize that with Town Attorney Horowitz? Okay, this is an informational item, nothing that we have to vote on, so I will not ask for a motion on that. I'll just thank Mr. Costello for that update. We will then jump into item C, and item C is, as Mr. Costello touched on, the customary agricultural operations. And I'm going to recognize Councilman Ockenden, because, again, this is something that he had brought forth, and would give him the opportunity to give us kind of an update as to where he is, and any recommendations or thoughts he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, and thank you for adding it to the agenda for this evening. As you recall, it was May 13th that we had this discussion with the board, regarding looking into making changes to our customary agricultural operations code. So I want to thank town staff. I know they've been working along with Attorney Horowitz on this topic. I appreciate them pulling together a matrix, as to what's going on in the communities around us, that gives us some insight into what others are doing, and how it's working out. We have had some communication from a group here in town, that has put together a petition. I don't have the formal petition to give to you tonight. It's done in electronic format, and I've been working with Kevin Ike, who has contacted me regarding this. And I just need to get it formally printed, so that I can see all the names on there. So we're working through that, and I would hope to have that at our next session, to present to you, and make part of the formal record. So, with that said, I want to thank them also. They did, too, provide a matrix of other communities, and what they're doing. So all this information has been great to have, in a topic that, you know, is becoming more important to our community. I'd like to, I guess, suggest that we shoot for taking this to the next step. Obviously, I'm eager to hear other board members' comments at this point, but maybe set our sights on a public hearing coming up sooner rather than later, obviously looking at the schedules, and seeing when we have this information completely put together. So, again, I'm eager to see this continue to move forward, you know, as soon as possible. And again, eager to hear any other comments tonight.
Thank you, Bob. I'll ask the board, any additional thoughts or comments to what Councilman Ockenden or Mr. Costello has offered up?
I thank Bob for bringing this up to the board. I think it's something a lot of residents are interested in, in considering what's going on with the current situation of sustainability, and people wanting to do their vegetable gardens, they want to raise their own chickens, they have eggs, and so on. It's the time, I think, if there was any time to be really evaluating this and bringing it to the public, it's now. So, I agree with you, I'd like to see it go forward at the public hearings, as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, I agree with Councilwoman Cole, and would like to personally thank Councilman Ockenden for bringing this forward. I know Bob called me a while ago about the issue, and wanted to kind of see what my thoughts were. I thought it was a proactive approach on his part, given what everybody's been experiencing over the last couple of months. As Councilwoman Cole mentioned, I think people are starting to take a look at backyard, you know, gardens, and more organic, kind of, healthy lifestyles, and certainly, this is a part of it. And so, under Councilman Ockenden's leadership, I think we are here where we are today, taking a look at this. And we have the opportunity to use the experiences, both good and bad, from other towns across Monroe County. And there are a few towns, such as Pittsford, Aranacoy, Brighton, in the city of Rochester, that do allow a certain amount of chickens, you know, on residential properties, and formulate a plan moving forward that works in the best interest of Penfield. I'm not supportive of looking at roosters on properties, unless it's a larger, more farm operation, maybe, you know, five acres plus or so, not holding myself to that, but certainly, I think- Not holding myself to that, but certainly I, I think chickens can be used and kept in a more reasonable amount of acreage versus roosters moving forward. So thank you, Bob, for your efforts in bringing this up. I look forward to continuing the conversation, certainly supportive of this moving forward here today and in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Any other last minute comments?
Mr. Supervisor, I just echo everyone's, everyone, everyone's thoughts and comments on it, Councilman Ockeden. I too agree. I'm glad you brought this to the forefront and I, I think it's where it's a, it's a good win-win for our town, for, for our residents to, to proceed and, and look at this and, and redo our ordinance and have it, have it available to people. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie. All right. This again is an information item that we had brought to the table, so it doesn't require a vote. I think that Mr. Costello, Mr. Horowitz have got the, the gist of, you know, the information from the Board as well as some materials that have come in from a number of residents supporting. We will look to get that put together and then ideally in, at one of our meetings in July, introduce a, a resolution to set a public hearing for changes and amendments to the, to the code that we have been working on to also include an amendment or a new section to our customary agricultural operations. So we'll work with that and look to have that to be heard by this Board for a public hearing in, sometime in August. So, okay. Thank you for that, Board, and thank you for the discussion. Bob, again, thank you for bringing that up for review by the Board. This brings us to information item D. This is a Baytown apartment application at 1211 Empire Boulevard. I think Mr. Costello wants to kind of give us a snapshot update as to where we are and then what the next steps that will be before this Board.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Recently, you did receive a response or a, I should say, a report, our PRC report from Doug Sangster last week, addressing the, the review that the three engineers did in our department on the application. I thought it was very thorough, very impressed by their efforts. We did get that information back to the applicants engineer, Passaro. They are currently working on the updates to get the plan cleaned up to address all of the concerns. The Monroe County Planning Department did send in its 239N referral. I do have that. I've kind of held off on that until, you know, we get further into this, but I will send that to you just as a compliment to the PRC comments. I'm really kind of waiting still for the applicants to get their, their final plans in so we can review them one last time. My intent would be to try and set a public hearing for you once we're satisfied with the response that they send to us with the revised plans. And at some point in time here, hopefully we could do this in a face-to-face public hearing and not, you know, not have the public have to zoom in to address their concerns with this application. So we are moving forward. It's just a matter now of trying to get past the COVID issue and get their plans to you in a final form.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Costello. I'll ask the Board, any questions of Jim on this particular item? I think what we will be living with as we move forward, even as we go through our various phases with COVID, I think we'll still be faced with between now and the end of the year, that as we can have more people in the auditorium, we'll see some folks coming back. I do believe that zooming in, that is going to be a way of the future, at least from what I see between now and maybe year end, if not longer. But we'll work both of those to make sure that we're offering as much opportunity for residents to either call in, zoom in, physically be here to make sure that they have the opportunity to comment on any matter that comes before the Board.
You're right, and it may be more comfortable for them to be able to sit in their living room and address the concerns rather than having to come in.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right. Again, that's another FYI, no action at this time. So this brings us to the end of our agenda and there being no further business to come before the Board this evening. The June 10th, 2020 work session will stand adjourned at 8:55 PM. I'd like to just once again thank our team, PCTV. We see everybody that are zooming in. We see some of us that are physically here. That doesn't happen by accident. That happens by a lot of wires, computers, wireless devices, servers and a number of other things. And I want to just thank the team downstairs, led by Dave Renner, Brian, Ryan, Amy, that work to make sure this all kind, comes together so that we're getting all of our information out. So thank you to that team. Thank you for everyone that participated. And during these times, I ask that everyone please be well and please be safe. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.[1748.57]